Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of Thursday, August 17th. Welcome back from our summer break. All of our council is present. Two of them are with us virtually. So, good to have Councilmember Duff and Councilmember Goforth with us online. Item one on our agenda is to review the agenda we have for our August 21st meeting. So, council, if you could please refer to that document. Let's go through that. Mr. Brady, is there anything on here that the staff wants to give us any presentations on?
Well, Mayor, yes. We'll get, when we get, maybe after you review the agenda. We have a specific item for study session on school safety, which is related to the three items of the interview agenda regarding the SROs and the cameras.
Okay.
So, we can discuss those as part of that presentation, if you like. So, we're ready to do that.
Yes, please. Great. Okay. So, we'll discuss school safety at the...
What we can talk about now, I just, we're gonna also have a presentation, too.
So, other than that, council, are there questions for this agenda? Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks on 4K, the purchase of our paving equipment for our crews. Mr. Brady, that's very important for their facilitate some of the street paving that you do within our community. And then also, on 5I, is a Lehigh Heritage neighborhood. So, with that, I know that'll be up on Monday's agenda. Would it be possible to have the presentation Monday evening at the council meeting?
Oh, by staff?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay. They can plan for that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. So, we'll take that off of consent and have a presentation at the council meeting upstairs. All right. Mr. Summers.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna request item 7C be removed from the consent agenda, and I want to have a little bit of a discussion about that today. I've had some discussions this week with staff about this particular item, and I do know that the applicant is here in the room, so if we could hear from him in a little bit, I'd like to discuss it. The issue I've had on this on a grander scale, that this is a Phase 3 of the Gateway Interchange Project. The Gateway Interchange Project is an industrial development, but this phase is particularly concerning because it's gotten through the entire process of staff review, planning and zoning, design review, and it's essentially a 119,000-square-foot warehouse, as described, that's being placed directly adjacent to a future residential neighborhood in the Hawes Crossing. The northeast corner is particularly sensitive when you review the site plan, because that northeast corner is what is directly adjacent to Hawes Crossing Residential there. And the plan, as currently described in the narrative, would place parking for more than 30 semi-truck trailers in this area. Nothing good comes out of this design. The concern I have is that when it says that the proposed project, and this is in the staff report, says that the proposed project conforms with the intent and purpose of the employment character area designation is consistent with the general plan. Point two is that the purpose of the development is consistent with the sub-area plan. So, that's gonna be the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan. And when we look at what that says, point, goal number two says that the city's goal is to create at least 100,000 high-wage jobs in this area. But the project narrative, the submittal documents, when we look at page, pardon me, when I look for it, we look at page five, there's a request for a parking reduction. And that parking reduction request is to reduce parking ratios request because this is a warehouse distribution portion of the building to consider anticipated heavy storage, limited occupancy characteristics of the potential tenant mix for the project. As storage systems become more automated and based on historical ratios of warehouse employees to storage space, fewer employees are required for storage areas. That does not meet the objective of goal number two. The strategic plan that we created for the Mesa Gateway area sets aside specific areas. We have the mixed-use area, Gateway Airport. This is an employment center. And to the south of State Route 24, that's where it's appropriate. That is a logistics and warehouse area with heavy manufacturing down there. This narrative suits the general plan for that logistics center, but not the inner-loop area. Inner-loop is for employment and business parks. This plan should not, this plan does not meet that objective. The other thing is it talks about improving safety within areas. If I'm back to the general plan, item number four, discussing safety of the general areas. As I mentioned before, parking for semi-trucks with a residential community in our future coming right next door. Nothing good comes from having motorcyclists or soccer moms intermixing with semi-trucks. Down on Ray Road, just not too long ago, we had a motorcycle accident, fatal. We've had several fatal accidents involving trucks down along Ray Road, and that's a fairly well-designed road along Hawes Road. It's narrow and stop signs. So, mixing those two, particularly when a lot of the roadways in this area are still in the county and have not been developed, this wouldn't make any sense. But the one that really gets me, there's two more. One is adding to the sense of place. This is what we talk about. What kind of city do we want to be? What do we want Mesa to be? Adding to a sense of place. How do we create places that people want to live, work, play, recreate, learn? And an industrial warehouse sitting next to a residential neighborhood is not a sense of place, or at least not the sense of place that I want to be in. We should have some strong questions about that. But the fifth item is that, does the proposed development provide appropriate transitions between uses? And that could be accomplished in three ways: design elements, separation of uses, and screening. And the PAD is requesting a reduction in many of these things: a reduction in trees, an increase in height, so it's greater visibility, and a reduction in various landscaping. In addition, there's a little parcel of this, it's almost like a road, but not wide enough to be a road, that goes all the way up to Warner Road, and the request in here is that we not landscape that stretch. So, what does that become? An alley next to homes? I would hope not. So, I have some serious reservations about a warehouse, because by all accounts, the way this project narrative reads is that we are trying to put a warehouse in this area. And I think what would be better served in this region is something more along lines of employment, where people truly, at least they can go to work. And I know that this developer, like I said, we gave him a heads-up. He sent me a list of all the companies that he's been working with over the years, which, again, he's a quality developer in the area. I just think that this plan does not fit the nature for this region. And I know staff has something to say, because they're staring at me.
Well, staff has a presentation prepared if Mayor and council would like us to present that and explain our analysis on this project. So, I'm seeing not with...
Yes, please.
And Mayor, if I may, the applicant is here and would like to say a few words when staff's done.
Well, let's get staff's presentation, and we'll take it from there.
Okay. All right. So, as we've been discussing, this project is a Gateway Interchange, and this is Phase 3 of a development located over in Hawes Crossing area. So, the request is to rezone the property from agriculture to light industrial with the planned area development. They're also seeking approval of a site plan, and this would be allowed for industrial development. And as indicated in the narrative, currently it's indicated as a warehouse. So, this is located south of Warner Road, east of 80th Street, and north of Sebring Avenue. And as you can see in this outline, and as Councilmember Summers described, there is a little bit of a flag that goes up to Warner Road here, kind of in the north area, and I'll discuss that in a little more detail further on. So, when we looked at the general plan, compliance and compatibility, this is within an employment area. The goal of the employment area is to provide for a wide range of employment opportunities in high-quality settings. The light industrial zoning district is indicated as a primary zoning district to be used within that character area, and warehousing is indicated as a primary land use as well. This is also within the Mesa Gateway Economic Activity Area. So, this was indicated as the area that really has the largest opportunity for growth in Mesa, and that is anticipated for a wide range of employment activities with a focus on education, aerospace, and aviation, and technology clusters. It's also located within the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan. It's specifically located within the inner-loop district. So, the vision of the inner-loop district is to provide for high-quality, mixed-use environments compatible with overflight activities. In the plan, it describes over time that this area should transition to mixed use with light industrial, office, retail, and possibly higher-density residential. In 2018, there was an update to the strategic plan. We did an inner-loop study, basically looking at specific land uses within this district. So, the refined land use plan projected that future development could result in about 55,000 jobs and about 12,000 new housing units. This plan is within the business character area of the inner-loop district, which is intended for businesses, offices, light industrial uses such as warehousing, research, and development compatible with overflight areas. And once again, light industrial is considered a primary zoning district that should be used. So, as staff, we are responding to the request to rezone this property to LI with the PAD with the intended use for warehousing. And in the analysis, it does comply with what is called out for primary zoning districts in both the employment character area and within this business park character area of the inner-loop district. We understand the council members' concern about the overall intent and vision for this area, but we are a little bit tied with how we can enforce the overall vision when it complies to these required elements. And I see that, Councilmember.
It complies to the LI zoning.
Correct.
Right. So, the project is currently stated in narrative. In order to accomplish that, you would want to zone this LI. And LI, within the LI zoning, light industrial zoning is warehousing.
Mm-hmm.
Right. But it's not LI. The land is currently not LI. What is it now?
It's currently agriculture, but the request is to rezone it to LI.
Correct. But it's agriculture. So, the purchase was for agricultural land. Is warehousing allowed in agricultural land?
No, it is not.
No. So, Jim, this is a legislative act of the authority.
Let's be clear, we don't zone ag, right? This is means that, this is how it came in when it was annexed. So, it's not, I want to be careful, it does not imply that we...
No, no, no.
Yeah.
No, I agree with you, Mr. Brady. But what I'm seeing here is that there's a different, there's a little bit different approach to get the same location. What staff is looking at is from the perspective of if this is going to be accomplished, this meets, this has to be, this has to be rezoned into industrial. Industrial would allow that use. What I'm looking at is what is the vision in the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan? And the strategic development plan, and that's in Chapter 15 of our general plan, on page 15-1 to 15-2, it states, "This is how staff evaluates these things. Does it meet the general plan?" The way I see this is that the general plan calls for business parks. Like this. Right?
And maybe like...
That. It's pretty clear that the objective here is to have high-design aesthetic and to really attract jobs. And I've already quoted the narrative that said, "This is a warehouse." The warehouse has no jobs. And the reason that the applicant is seeking reduced parking is the warehouse has no jobs. So, what I'm saying is that I am not interested in rezoning this to a light industrial if this doesn't, if a warehouse doesn't meet the strategic objectives of the Gateway Plan. That if a warehouse is needed, if logistics are needed, those types of things, particularly when they have low jobs, should be down in the logistics portion of the Gateway Area south of the SR24. Does not fit the character for the inner-loop district, as I see it.
Mr. Smith.
Mayor and council, if I can maybe offer a solution or an alternative? And going back to the question you asked, it's a legislative act, so council has full discretion to deny this request on a rezoning. What we've done in the past on cases like this is enter into a development agreement so that you don't, maybe there's a limited amount of warehouse, or there's other types of uses, and through a development agreement, you have greater flexibility than you do through just a rezoning. And so, that way, you also are able to create transition areas that are between residential and industrial. And so, you see that on a number of cases. In the last couple of years, you've seen that, the number of cases where we've done development agreements to limit the either type of warehousing, amount of warehousing, or warehousing within certain space within, on a specific site. So, maybe what we do is, is we could pull this item, we'd have to go do a development agreement, bring it back, we'd reintroduce it, because we'd add a stipulation, too, because when we have a development agreement, we also add a stip regarding compliance with the DA, so it'd have to be reintroduced. And we'd bring it back to you in the future with the development agreement with whatever new steps that we have. So, that's another possibility we could do, to look at sort of creating, mitigating the warehouse, and also looking at it as far as a transition between the residential and the industrial space.
Rachel, where is the residential? Because this is an area that we're trying to protect from, we've got overflights from the airport here. So, it would mean high-density residential that comes in, right?
It would. So, on the map that's currently on the screen, to the east is RSL 2.5. That has not come in for development yet, but that was rezoned with the Hawes Crossing development a couple of years ago.
So, is residential part of that?
It would have to be high-density residential, right?
It would.
Yeah.
The extension up to Warner, is that just a...
What's that flag?
An access for this property? It's not a public road? Or is, I meant that with a question.
Mayor, that's correct, yes. So, it's just a flag that would be an access drive for the development.
So, if that weren't part of this, what would, would there be any access to this property?
There would. So, there is access from Sebring and from 80th Street. So, you can see up in the northwest corner is access from 80th Street. Southeast corner is access from Sebring Avenue.
Okay. All right. Council, other questions on this before we hear from the applicant? Yes, Ms. Spillsbury.
I don't know, it's not, I don't know if you were gonna do your whole presentation or not, but on, I just lost one slide, um, slide 10, it says there's 179 parking spaces. So, if there's no jobs, who's parking there?
That is correct. So, their narrative is actually, they failed to update that. They are not requesting a parking reduction. 178 spaces were required per code, and they are providing 179.
Which would imply there would be employees?
Yes.
Just not as you're wanting, or, I'm just curi, I don't get the...
I would need the applicant to address how many employees.
Well, but to the council's point, it's also kind of a ratio, right? A square footage, the employment. So, I suspect it's still pretty low.
So, you're just saying you want more employment there? Not that this has no employees?
The way this reads, this, and the way this site plan currently looks, this is a warehouse. And it specifically calls out for the parking. And this is disturbing, too, that apparently the documents that we're reading are supposed to vote on aren't accurate? Because it says, "Anticipated heavy storage, limited occupancy characteristics," excuse me, "of the potential tenant mix for the project. Based on historical ratios of warehouse employees to storage space, fewer employees are required for storage areas." That is the basis for the request of reduction of parking.
Yes. Councilmember, originally, they had requested a parking reduction, and staff had worked with them to get them to comply with that.
So, this is an act?
The staff report is accurate, but they did not apparently update their narrative.
So, we need an updated narrative, too, kind of thing. And that's my understanding that one is submitted? Do we have an updated narrative?
They have submitted an updated narrative. I believe that they still need to address that.
But, but councilman, you're still, your concern is the warehousing concept, not, I mean, we could discuss parking spaces, but your issue is more about...
So, let's, let me give you an example, because we've approved Phase 1 and Phase 2.
Yeah.
There's warehousing there, right? There's, any manufacturer, any production has to have some kind of warehousing. You have to store components that have to be assembled, and then, once you've created your product, it has to be stored before it's shipped out. So, that's, that's not the issue. This, what we're, as described and as what it looks like, with semi-parking, with 119,000 square foot under roof, and the way this is described, this is nothing but a warehouse.
Right. Versus seeking manufacturing with employment.
Versus a manufacturer.
With employees. I just want to make that, put that on the record. I think we're all, get to the clarity on this.
But, Mr. Sacco, again, in the audience, I think, has a different idea.
Okay.
So, Mayor, can we...
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
So, Rachel and Mayor, the RSL 2.5, you say it's to the east currently, and it's zoned for that. And potentially, this site, if it's developed from ag to its current proposed zoning, there's still an ag portion to, off of Warner Road. That would be adjacent to that small sliver right-of-way roadway, and that would potentially, to Mr. Summers' point, could include some type of warehousing or some type of zoning if the applicant came in and requested that. Could that continue? And then, you have not only this warehouse, I'll use the word warehouse, and then potentially a second one or a third one towards Warner, and then you have that all buffering along the RSL.
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so yes, there is a portion just north of the site that it would, is agriculture, that is not part of this request. So, in the future, the property owner could come in and request a rezone of that property.
And we would go through the same evaluation of all these plans. And the Councilor Summers' point is, while there is a, there's a more recent discussion, I think we have to be careful, and kind of, we point to all these different plans, but the more recent, the inner, not inner-loop plan, what do we call it? The plan we did...
The inner-loop study, yes.
The inner-loop setting. That's really kind of where we start from. Everything's ag. When we bring it in under annexation, it just, because it doesn't come with zoning, right? So, we just, that's where it's a placeholder. Because when you look at the photos, it's not ag. It's outdoor storage or something. So, anyway, this is just a way of giving the council, because applicants now have to come in, right, with these annexed properties and seek zoning for it. And we use the guidance, and probably most specifically, the most recent plan that was approved by council three years ago, four years ago, on the inner-loop. And that's one we start with.
18.
Yeah.
So, just to summarize, I'm seeing potentially the other ag portion being somewhat in this arena of the warehousing. And then, this light-shaded area, the GC, is that general commercial? That would be...
That is correct.
And that's already zoned to do that.
That is.
So, that would still affect the neighborhoods if that was built, the high-density area. So, remind me, what's general commercial? What would be allowed to use there?
General commercial is your highest commercial district, so you can include a lot of automotive uses, retail, automotive sales, automotive washing, repair, restaurants, yeah, large array of commercial uses.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Rachel, did you finish your presentation? I'm sorry, we started peppering your questions, and I didn't know if you got everything out.
No. I didn't go all the way through, but it's really up to council if you'd like me to continue through. I know we've discussed a lot of pieces of it.
I'd like to know as much as I can, so, sure.
So, I think we left off on this slide discussing the employment character area and then the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan. So, these are just a couple of photos of the site. It's currently being used for outdoor storage.
Looks like ag to me.
As we've been discussing, the zoning is agriculture, they're requesting the LI, PAD, and office/warehouse use, which they've indicated is a permitted use in the LI district. They are requesting a planned area development to deviate from some code requirements. One of them is building height. So, in the LI district, 40 feet is the maximum building height allowed. They're requesting 50 feet. Within the business park character area of the inner-loop district, it does encourage taller buildings if there are no interference with the airport, overflights in the area. So, staff felt comfortable with that request. They're requesting reduced setbacks on the eastern property line, so 25 feet is required next to residential uses or zoning. They're requesting 15 feet along that eastern property line. And then, they're requesting a reduction in landscape material. So, per the code, five trees are required per every 100 feet of linear frontage on that property line. So, that would be 35 trees along that eastern property. They're requesting zero feet along the northeastern portion, that is that flag lock that we had discussed. But the remainder of this eastern side would be landscaped here. And in lieu of that, they were adding additional trees and shrubs along Sebring and 80th Avenue to offset that. So, this is the site plan that we were looking at before. It includes one building that is roughly 120,000 square feet. As we discussed, there's truck access both from 80th Street and from Sebring Avenue. We do have your truck docks and your storage along the north side of the property, and this would be screened by an eight-foot masonry wall. They are meeting parking requirements. They are providing one additional parking space above what's required. Here we have the landscape plan for the development. So, along the north edge, our zoning ordinance does not require landscaping within a storage area, so there's no landscaping in that portion. But they do have landscaping on all other perimeters of the site. As we had discussed, they had requested a reduced landscape yard along the eastern property line to 15 feet. However, they still are providing the required number of landscape material within that landscape yard. And then, they have an amenity area that's proposed in the southeast corner of the site for employees. These are some screenshots of the elevations. They did request alternative compliance for these, this design. It's composed of mainly tilt-up concrete, but it does have differing colors, and it's used different form liners to create different textures in the building facade. They also are using metal awnings, accents, and louvers to create additional details in that facade. And this is, it matches the elevations that they have already developed south of Sebring Avenue in the Gateway Interchange, Phase 1 and 2. Here's just a rendering that you can see of the site. So, they did, they did complete their citizen participation. Staff did not receive any comments from any property owners on this project. And in summary, we find that it complies with the general plan, with the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan, that it complies with the site plan review criteria and the review criteria for a planned area development. Staff's recommendation is approval with conditions, and planning and zoning also recommended approval with conditions. And I would be happy to answer any additional questions.
Yes, Ms. Spillsbury.
Just one more really quick. But the little, the little drive that goes up to Warner, I mean, anyways, so there's, it's just gonna be like pavement with walls, or what is that gonna look like? And what's the point of it if it's not showing up here on like the site plan?
The applicant might be able to explain a little bit more about the intent of that, but I do not believe there's a wall. It would mostly just be the pavement of the drive, the infrastructure itself.
Okay. With no landscaping, so just, okay. Just seems odd when there's already two access points on the site plan.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Goforth.
Rachel, will you go back to where, I think there was a slide showing how it complies with the Mesa Gateway Strategic Development Plan? Where is that?
Slide 5?
Yes. Okay. And can you just reiterate again your justification for its compliance, just high-level, through this slide real quick?
Yeah. So, the character area within the inner-loop district with, is the business park character area. And within the Gateway Strategic Development Plan, it discusses that it's intended for businesses, offices, in light industrial uses such as warehouses, and also research development, and other industrial uses compatible with the airport. It indicates in the plan that light industrial should be used as one of the primary zoning districts to accomplish that. So, from staff standpoint of both it calling out light industrial as, you know, an intended appropriate zoning district, and also warehousing being anticipated in this area, staff... appropriate zoning district and also warehousing being anticipated in this area, staff finds that it complies with the intent of that.
But I think Scott's point is that light industrial as it supports aviation and the airport, correct? And we're not, that's not necessarily guaranteed to happen here? Is that?
Counselor, go forth.
I don't, I don't know that it suggests that it has to support the airport. It's supposed to be compatible with the airport, meaning we're trying to avoid conflicts with noise from the airport. I think, I think that was the suggestion, not necessarily that it does business with the airport.
But I think, Councilmember Summers, your point though is that warehousing as it supports a manufacturing use or something that's compatible with the airport, correct? Not just warehousing, general warehousing?
Right. And the way this is designed currently, it is a giant warehouse with semi-truck parking behind it, on the other side of an eight-foot wall from what is currently zoned residential. Nothing good comes of these things. And if it is a giant warehouse, you know, then there, it remains to be seen. We have 180 parking spaces roughly, but the narrative itself says there's no jobs. That doesn't meet the strategic objectives of 100,000 highways jobs, which apparently was lowered to 55,000 highways jobs. Either way, it doesn't meet that objective. So I disagree with staff that this, this meets that strategic objective.
And to me, I don't even think, I understand going through the, the technical specifics of the zoning districts, but if you can't get past the, the strategic development plan, meaning if it doesn't support that, I mean, my evaluation doesn't go past that. So I, it doesn't sound like it truly supports the plan regardless of, of the technicalities down in the, the light industrial zoning district. That's, that's my comment on that.
Ms. Duff, do you have any questions on this?
A couple of comments, and I might have to switch my video off if my feed, my wifi isn't that great, so if I switch off, it's just to keep the connection. So I have a question on, are we even close to meeting the employment objective in the Gateway Strategic Plan? And number two, the blue area around it in slide, it's already zoned light industrial on number eight, is that already committed and decided? What is that land? It's LI.
Mayor, Councilwoman Duff, I'm going to ask if maybe the Economic Development Director could address the number of jobs within the area. I can address the zoning. So directly west of this property, the portion that's zoned LI, it is not currently developed, but just south of this, south of Sebring, is, is developed with Phase One and Two of the same development.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmember Duff, in terms of the 100,000 jobs, I don't think we have kept a cumulative total since that original plan has been done. I can go back and try to recreate things, but we keep track of the jobs that we've been associated with. There are other developments that happened without our assistance as well. So when the overall vision, I think, was created in the Gateway Strategic Plan, Chris, when was that, 2008, '09? The timeframe? I think that the objective now is we could go back and look at other forms of metrics that we may have besides just what we track for jobs along the way.
Well, and Bill, we would say that back in that, those days, we were chasing a lot of office-type development. That was our hope. And that, obviously, that creates a lot more density of jobs within a development. And so what that, there, you know, you can look at the development today with data centers and these large manufacturing, the density of jobs per square foot is not probably what we were imagining back then. But we wouldn't, we couldn't get a developer to build an office today. I mean, that's just not in question. But I think the Councilmember Summers' point is, we also don't want this to just be big warehouses with cross-docks and semi-trailers just moving in and out. We still, I mean, Bill, we've talked about this, it's not, it's just maybe the idea of what types of jobs have kind of re, pivoted more to manufacturing and trying to create quality jobs related to more, the more recent kinds of technology, whether it's electric vehicles or batteries, so. And somewhere else, and the Council made a very good point, the warehousing has to kind of come associated with some of that manufacturing. So I think we're always kind of cautious about only having a big logistics center that has very few jobs in a ratio perspective. So I think that's kind of where maybe we need to hear from the applicant about their vision, but, I mean, Bill's still trying to work to get jobs here, but we, it's not, probably not the same level of density that we thought about years ago.
Well, I think that's very fair, and you challenged me a couple of years ago to raise the average quality of the jobs. So we look at average salaries, warehousing does not traditionally pay a high wage. There may be a lot of them, but they're all lower wage. The challenge given to me, and I've heard it from all of the council members, is better quality jobs. And typically, a manufacturing requires a better skill set, which pays a little bit more compared to a warehouse. So that's why I think bringing the applicant up, let Mike explain, East Group is an excellent development group. I think that the narrative is just wrong and needs to get changed, and I go back to what Jim said, maybe it's time to pull back and reconfigure here a little bit and get it straightened out and bring it back, so.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
My question is, goes to, as, as this area develops, I understand that it's going to be a mixed use of office, warehousing, high-density. How do we ensure as we go through some of these plans is that, that buffering effect of, when you have, you know, RL, what is it, 2.3, 2.5, next to it, where a high-density potential apartment will be there, is how do we buffer in, in a way that makes sense, right? So applying those, that, that planning piece is going to be an important aspect to this area, I think, as we move forward, because if not, we'll have some of the same issues come along all throughout this area, right? Where you're, you're seeing a mix of warehousing space, high-density, and just a mixed mash. And so how do we create a comprehensive kind of look at, you know, the surrounding pieces to make sure that buffering effect makes sense? And it is not, it is not, you know, from the business aspect and from the people that will be living there, it's not creating those tensions from the front end to long-term, right? So that's my comment on this.
Thank you. I couldn't tell from where I was sitting, are there, is this designed for cross-docks?
Mayor, no, it is not.
It's not? Okay, so that would imply that it's somewhat flexible. It's not intended to be exclusively a warehouse. It is, has some flexibility, and it's being built as a spec and could be used for manufacturing or, I guess, whatever ultimately the deal you struck with the, with the purchaser.
And Mayor, I guess I would, I would add to that. That building design is really tailored more towards manufacturing, which it's more, it's known as rectangular, it's more square. I think that's why, I think you'll hear Mike say the same thing, and that it's really designed for that. It's just the narrative didn't really match up to it. And I'll give the council member credit, he was reading through everything. Caught the warehouse comments and, and there you go.
He reads everything.
When he calls me on a Saturday and says, hey, what's going on? And I, you know, anyway, long story short, it's good to get it clarified, and I'm going to ask that Mike come up, if that's okay.
Great.
That's why Mary didn't get me an Uber.
Thank you. I think there's a, there's a lot of reasons.
I'm going to make one more comment, just, and tag on to Vice Mayor's comment, because on the setback request on the PAD, it from 25 to 15, that then puts the building and parking closer to the residential component, because obviously there, and, and I wouldn't be doing that. I would put as far buffer away from the potential residential use versus 15 to 25. Not that it'd make a whole lot of difference, but it shows that we're proactive in that. That's my last comment. Thanks.
And I would say, Council, as much as, as the setbacks on the building tonight is important, I think the thing that we, and the Council mentioned this, it's, it's really that midst of traffic, right? If you're going to have big trucks and you're going to have people on the residential side, that's, that's probably where you, because these are tilted, they're not noxious fumes coming out that are going to create a problem, but it's, it's, it's that mixing of the, the big trucks with the, you know, residential trucks, I think, or residential cars. I think we've got to watch that too, in, in these processes too.
All right. Thank you, sir, for being so patient and letting us talk about you like this. But give us your thoughts, please.
Well, first off, thank you for the opportunity. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. My name's Mike Sacco. I'm with East Group Properties. We own 4 million square feet of this type of product in Arizona. 1.8 million of that happens to be occupied by manufacturers. And I just want to be clear, my intent for this Phase Three building was a one-building expansion of the approved project across the street. We have seven buildings approved, almost 700,000 square feet, and I'm here today because of, honestly, an inaccurate narrative. I changed consultants for this rezoning. We hired Iplan, who is a professional consultant for rezoning for Phases One and Two. They did an excellent job, did the heavy lifting, got our project approved. On, on this Phase Three, I figured the work had been done. I just went ahead and allowed my architect to submit the package. He submitted it right at the deadline without an opportunity for me to review it, which is, you know, partially my fault. So, like I said, it really, the intent was just an additional building within that park. The truck parking was added because, as you could see in the space plan or the, the site plan, it was an irregularly shaped lot that had a little pop-out, and it just so happened that trailers fit perfectly into that pop-out, so we were paying for the land. We figured, you know, let's, let's utilize it for something. I'd like to quickly just read a couple of lines from an East Group internal investment memo that got this land purchase approved, and it's about the property characteristics and the future development. One of the bullet points that I made was the building depth is 260 feet. This adds to the variety of building depths in Phases One and Two and accommodates a high percentage of manufacturing users within the submarket. So this really was intended, as Bill was getting to the point, you know, distribution buildings are typically long and rectangular. Manufacturing buildings are more square and, and deeper, and that's what this building is. Every bill, also, I want to make the point that every building in Phases One, Two, and Three have 56-foot column spacing within them. This also lends itself to manufacturers. Manufacturers need big open spans for their operations and for their equipment. If, if this was, if this was really targeted to just be a distribution building, we would have 52-foot column spacing, because that allows for less space between the doors, giving you more doors. So we actually have fewer doors on our buildings compared to a lot of the buildings you'll see out there that have the 52-foot column spacing, because you're still putting four doors within, the end product is you're putting four doors in a 56-foot span instead of in a 52, which over a whole building, you know, could add four, five, six more doors. Let's see if I have anything else here. Oh, regarding that sliver that kept coming up, that was just the way the parcel was. I don't need that sliver. I would be happy to dedicate it away to the other property owners. It just came with the parcel. I actually had to pay for it, unfortunately, and now I'm stuck with it. And I'm flexible on, you know, what, what you all would like to be done with it, including just annexing, or, you know, chopping it off if that's, that's an option. I'm sure the other landowners would be happy to take it from me. And then, just kind of, oh, the parking that came up too. The parking ratios are consistent with Phases One and Two and offer, you know, a, a good deal of parking at almost, I think, 179 spaces. So that, those are, I guess, the points I wanted to make, and maybe it would have been helpful if I made those first, but those are.
Thank you very much. Mr. Summers.
So, Mayor, let's see if we can wrap it up, if, if it's agreeable to all the parties involved. Mike, it sounds like, it sounds like what you envisioned for this property isn't what's described, I mean, it's described as a warehouse.
Agreed.
But that's not what you're seeing.
It's, right. And that's.
And you have an updated narrative?
Unfortunately.
I haven't seen the updated narrative. I know there's an updated narrative.
There is.
What I would suggest is that we tabled this, allow Mary's office to evaluate the updated narrative.
Sure.
Speak with Jim about development agreement and how we can manage a couple of the issues that have, that have come up, and then if it works for Jim's office, Mary's office, have this come back after that's done.
And if I may make one more point I left out, in my internal memo, I noted that there are 20 trailer parking stalls, but those could be converted to 30 vehicle stalls if needed.
Okay.
So again, there's flexibility there, and, and those were put there only because we looked at that and said, oh, you could put a trailer right in there.
I, I see 30 vehicle stalls next to houses. You can see what my vision is, right? 30 vehicle stalls of semi-trucks next to homes, and then in my line of work, they're all on fire.
Yeah, well, and so again, you know, if that were to be a compromise, I'd be happy just to not have the trailer stalls and, and make them additional vehicle parking.
I think we can take care of that. If, if that works for Mr. Brady, Jim, Mary, and the Mayor.
Yeah, we'll just have to see what a development agreement, we have to go back, how far back we have to go in this process.
Correct.
And also just remember, Council, until that property owner to the east comes in, we'll work with them on buffers too, right? Now that we know what this property looks like, their setbacks may be, you know, we'll deal with that too. So it's not just, it's not like they're going to build right up to the edge either. We're going to be dealing with, we're not going to let them have access right into this property either, so we'll, we'll work on that. But yes, I think we have, I think the goal, or the, what I hear is, let's table this, we'll, we'll work, city attorneys and Mary will work on a solution with the feedback here, and then we'll come back.
And I have been in touch with that other residential developer, shared my site plans. They, they understand exactly what, that's helpful, let's plan there.
Great. So absolutely, if you don't mind, we'll, we'll just take this off the agenda for Monday, and it sounds like we're very close to working out a deal for it to, to get back on the agenda soon.
Excellent. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
You bet. All right, Council, other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Summers, okay. I know we're ready at some point to talk about the school safety issue. Council, are you ready to move on to that, or is there any other questions? All right. Hearing none. Mr. Brady, let's, let's move on to Agenda Item 2A, which is to hear a presentation discussion, receive an update on school safety and youth outreach. Commander, Lieutenant, good to have you with us.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Council, thank you. I don't want to leave him out, but. Thank you for having us. We appreciate the opportunity to join you this morning and discuss school safety and youth outreach. My name is Stephanie Deravan. I'm the commander over our Metro Resources Division, and with me today is Lieutenant Ryan Stokes, who's the lieutenant over our School Resource Officers, Real-Time Crime Center, Homeland Security Fusion. We wear a lot of hats. So with that, we'll get started. City of Mesa and the Mesa Police Department currently have 19 full-time school resource officers covering, covering 20 schools in the City of Mesa. Those are from three different school districts, Mesa Public Schools, Gilbert Public Schools, as well as our new Queen Creek School from a couple of years ago. And beginning this year, we're excited that Mesa Public Schools has committed to adding an additional off-duty officer at our high schools. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My apologies. Is adding an additional off-duty officer to our high schools to give us two officers on campus at our high schools during the school day. Want to touch on some of our other resources?
Some of our other resources that we incorporate with our SROs, anytime a threat call comes in, we include our ICU, our Intel Counterterrorism Unit that looks at the threat, vets it. We also include our CIU, our Criminal Investigation Division, that we make sure we're covering all the bases and we're covering everything. Anytime some. that looks at the threat, vets it. We also include our CIU, our Criminal Investigation Division, that we make sure we're covering all the bases and we're covering everything anytime something significant happens at a school. In addition, we're working, as you know, the Real-Time Crime Center. We currently have access, and we'll touch on that in a slide. Here in a minute.
All right, we're excited about the collaborative training that we're able to participate in with Mesa Public Schools. Dr. Forless and Al Moore and the security team are very engaged, we have a great partnership with them. Al Moore's security team regularly attends our SRO briefings and to discuss emergency operations protocols and any updates along the school district. Our Alan Kane from Gilbert Unified School District, he also, his team has also invited to all of our meetings. And our Queen Creek Security Director is actually a retired Mesa Police SRO. So that's a great connection down there. And they're all actively engaged with their SROs and their programs.
In light of some of the recent shootings, some school shootings that have happened in the past few years, we've instituted go-bags for all of our junior highs and high schools. These are bags that are placed in the SRO's office that has additional first aid supplies, keys, maps to the school. So any officer that came on campus that had to immediately respond to an incident could grab that bag and have all the tools necessary. In addition to the go-bags, we've deployed breaching tools. We've seen in the news some doors that have been locked in some of the recent school shootings. All the SROs have been trained and equipped with tools should they encounter a locked door that they would be able to immediately breach.
Our SROs, while their primary focus is school safety, they are also part of the community that is each of their schools, and they are actively engaged with the community. We've partnered with the Be Safe Autism Awareness Program, and that's been held at several of our schools, hosted at several of our schools. We also do joint projects, our SROs, along with our patrol officers. We have the Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run, they do Feed My Starving Children, Christmas Toy Drives, just any kind of activities that they can do to be part of the community that is the school. And of course, they also participate in the athletic events and are there to provide for school safety for that, but also be a presence in the community. Next, it's no secret that we have an opioid crisis in not just Arizona, but across the nation. Our school resource officers are responsible for teaching law-related education as part of their role. And in addition to other topics, they are touching on the opioid crisis, both as part of the City of Mesa Opioid Initiative. We've worked with our County Public Health Fellow this summer, we had two different consensus workshops and sessions to develop what the appropriate curriculum is and what the school resource officers would like to have as part of that this year, as well as adding healthy coping skills into that curriculum. Want to talk about the Fentanyl Project?
Yes, we've also partnered with a group called the Fentanyl Project. It includes a retired Officer Brock Bevel, as well as retired football quarterback Max Hall. They both have came in, presented to the SROs, to the schools, talking about their struggles, their journey to overcome addiction, as well as plans to come and provide future trainings to all the school kids.
And our school resource officers also received additional training on drug recognition, how to identify if a student is under the influence, and they can also share that information with staff. The Mesa Police Community Relations Division did a community forum at the end of last school year for teachers and on drug recognition to help them identify what some of the products are. I mean, not just drugs, but also the vaping products, because a lot of times they don't even realize what they're looking at. So, more from a recognition standpoint, and so that was very helpful. Really quick, I wanted to go back to the safety I forgot to mention. With Mesa Public Schools' lead administration, the superintendent, as well as all the principals, our emergency management team did a tabletop exercise for an active shooter response with them over the summer months. So, sorry for that. Go back. Want to touch on this? Yes, sir?
Just a topic that we're all, unfortunately, you know, very curious, you know, to make sure that we're doing that training. So, was that just, I think what you just said, MPS, all of the principals went through active shooter training? GPS and Queen Creek, are we working with them as well for active training?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're actively involved in it as well. This was a particular request by Mesa Public Schools' leadership to conduct a tabletop exercise with their school staff.
Okay. So, remind me.
I was going to say, Mayor, not long ago, before all this started, I met with the superintendent of Mesa Public Schools and her staff, and I had the chief, and we sat down and had a conversation about, you know, working together and making these opportunities available. And so I think there's been a commitment on both sides to really develop all these different programs from the beginning. So, I think the initial focus was, let's get, you know, Mesa Public Schools online and get connected with their, we're always connected with their staff, we've always had a great relationship, was kind of taking it a little bit further with some very specific trainings that we got to be involved in this summer.
In addition to the superintendent and the principal training, the SROs are doing ongoing training every month with the actual security officers that are on each campus, walking through planned lockdowns as well as unannounced lockdown drills.
So, we don't have SROs on the elementary campuses, but we do for the junior high and high school campuses, correct?
Correct.
So, the training for active shooters for elementary schools would focus primarily on, I mean, the captain of that situation until a police officer arrived would be presumably the principal or assistant principal.
Correct.
And they have received the training, you're saying?
Yes. And we did, all of our patrol officers, actually, all of our City of Mesa Police Officers, sworn staff, went through active shooter training over this last summer at Porter Elementary School.
I'm sorry, say that again.
And all of our staff went through active shooter training at Porter Elementary School over the summer. And the school security personnel were also engaged in that training as well.
You say all of our staff, that doesn't mean all of the Mesa Police Department?
Mesa Police Department, all of our Mesa Police Officers, yes.
Including the SROs?
I can attest, I was there the other day with the chiefs.
Including the SROs?
Correct.
But, and as far as...
Just imagine, every patrol officer.
Every sworn officer.
Sworn officer, so if there's a call at a school, elementary school.
Correct.
A patrol officer, whoever's the closest officer.
Anybody.
Can respond, able, and they were trained, we saw this, right? As soon as, whether they were by themselves, or with two, or four, whatever, they go to, they go into the school and they go directly to the stimulation, or whatever you guys call it. They go right to the shooting. And so they were trained to go into that school and not stop, and we've had this understanding with the school, because that's, obviously, we've seen that as a concern in other incidents, but they're trained to go.
We go in immediately.
Immediately.
Years past, the training was to wait till you had a team of four. That is no more, that's gone. It's the first person on scene, obviously, we need communication so we know who's in the building, but we immediately enter and go after.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury.
I just wanted to make a comment because that's where all my kids went to school, is Porter, and I live right by there, and so...
Who knew they had a basement?
It was great. Yes, they do. My kids were in classes down there. But, so, I got to drive by a lot and see that it was happening. And then also, my daughter and son-in-law that work for Mesa Public Schools got to go and be like the extras.
Actors, good.
Yeah. So, and they had an incredible experience or two. So I just, I loved over the summer seeing that that was happening, and it made me feel good for our community.
It was an active environment all summer, and we did have a lot of people from Mesa Public Schools in a variety of assignments that helped us as extras. And they were the, you know, school patrons and anything, you know, so we were able to move them out and get between them and the threat, and so it was part of our training was, and it's helpful for them as well to see and be part of it.
Thank you. I just think we, and I knew that that had happened, and I just want to make sure that we said that publicly. So, if you go to any school right now, obviously, it's, the environment there is very different than it was just a few years ago with regard to the fencing and the locked doors, and I know this is...
Yeah, the schools are put in, in every school, they're more security, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So I know there's a lot that's been done to this, but I think just parents and the community would, it's important that they know the amount of effort that's gone into training and, not in anticipation of, but in terror of something like this happening. Mr. Freeman.
I know we're not done yet, right?
No.
I could save it for the question part.
You're good.
Okay, 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 so, thank you.
You know, I think we can learn from all the events that's happened nationally as well as locally, and especially, I mean, last week in the news, there were guns found in some of the school districts in the Phoenix area. So hopefully, you know, education and awareness of the students as well as the parents and checking backpacks and things, you know, they may be left there intentionally or unintentionally, but I think that's an important component. And thank you so much for just the training. I mean, it's, if something were to happen in our district, I would expect our officers to respond appropriately and handle the situation. And so, I'm glad all the educators and principals and everybody are aware. But, I guess my question is, when you find some type of firearm or potential firearm with a student, what happens?
Do you want to touch on that?
Depends on if they get notified that student X is walking around school on campus that may have a gun in the backpack. They will isolate that student, they will call in a team, come up, they already have plans and they've already walked through these different scenarios to make sure that the other students are isolated before they go and make contact with that student. If it's in a classroom, the SRO will go in the classroom, keep eyes on that student, call that student out of the classroom to try to separate him, him or her, from the general public. Get him back to the office, and that's usually where the search will happen.
Okay. In a more discreet, safe area, I suppose.
Correct.
This is, vaping is, I'm going to switch gears, vaping is very discreet. I mean, I don't even know when a person's vaping, you know, because there's no, you look for the smoke, but apparently that's not necessary.
Correct.
And that's in the schools as well. So how is that handled?
You want to touch on that?
Sure. Anytime a student is found with a vaping device, they usually are suspended and a criminal complaint is written up and charged them with that particular vaping charge. It's a little difficult finding it in their pockets because kids are very discreet, they will hide, but they, every school has a specific hotline that students can call in anonymously and report that. Teachers, if they notice it, they'll report it back to the SRO, it'll be handled.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you. Finish up.
We're close. And lastly, I'll have Ryan touch on our Real-Time Crime Center, Mesa Public Schools and Gilbert Public School, and their camera integration.
I think all of you have been able to tour our Real-Time Crime Center. We've been up and running for a little bit over a year now, and have seen huge successes in just being able to leverage the technologies that we have. We've had access to Mesa Public Schools, they have over 3,000 cameras. Theirs is on a separate platform called a Vigilon. We're in the final stages of selecting a third-party vendor that will be able to come in and seamlessly connect their camera system with our current camera system. Should there be an incident on a school, the operators can immediately zoom in on that specific map without having to go through a drop-down list of figuring out what building is 300 building, 400 building. They can immediately go in, access that camera, and provide that real-time information to the responding officers, see what is going on, provide resources to PD as well as fire. Gilbert has the exact same platform of Vigilon, so we have IGAs that we're working on, I think will be signed, to be able to access their camera systems as well. And we are also in discussions with Queen Creek to be able to obtain access during emergency situations.
And finally, I actually got ahead of myself apparently with the active tabletop exercises. So we do that annually with all of our stakeholders, but this year we added the larger-scale one with the school leadership. And we appreciate Dr. Forless, as well as Al Moore and their security team. We have a phenomenal relationship with each of the school districts. A little extra special with Mesa because they are our home city, and we just appreciate their support and collaboration with everything that we do. And with that, we'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury, and then Mr. Summers.
Thank you for this. I, I'm assuming that Gilbert and Queen Creek Schools are just the ones located in the City of Mesa, that you have access to the cameras?
Correct. It's Desert Ridge Junior High, Highland Junior High, Desert Ridge High School, or the Gilbert Schools that we have SROs at, and then East Mark High is the only high school that we have for Queen Creek School.
What about elementary cameras?
We will be getting access to those cameras, like we have Mesa School Elementary Cameras, yes. But we'll only be getting access to those schools that are within our jurisdiction.
It'll be isolated.
Okay. And then, what was my other question? I already lost it. Mark talked for too long. Just kidding. I'm just kidding. He likes to jab at me, so, I can't remember it. I'll wait if I remember, sorry.
Let us know if you remember. You're okay, Mr. Summers?
Yeah, that was related to my question too.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Goforth, Ms. Duff, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you for the presentation. It's important for us to hear this, as well as our residents to understand the partnership between Mesa Police Department and our schools. And so, especially the active shooter training, thank you for keeping that up to date and learning from these incidences, unfortunately, but that's what has to be done. But I think it's great that our residents hear that that's what Mesa PD is doing and staying up to date on how to respond to these unfortunate events. So, anyway, just wanted to say thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Ms. Duff, I know you're on and off the camera, anything you'd like to add to this?
No, no questions. Just a big thank you for all the work that the Mesa Police Department does for our entire community at our schools. It's very important, and we're in good hands, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spillsbury.
I remembered. Last year I got to attend a training for the SROs on mental health. Did that happen again this year? Is that, I was really excited about that training last year.
They review it over October break as well as spring break. They review, go through that same training twice a year.
Okay, awesome. Because that, I thought that was just, I mean, we're asking these SROs to do a lot, including all the mental health issues, but when they interact with the students, especially after something, you know, like an incident, a behavior incident or a traumatic incident happens, it's just so important that that mental health piece is there too. And so, I really enjoyed, I was there for a few hours last year, and I just, I loved the training and was so excited that our SROs were getting that, the ones that are interacting with our teenagers, that that's a really hard population to work with sometimes. So, great. I love that our city and our city council and our city management is known for supporting our police department and specifically our SROs, which that's not the case across the Valley, and so I'm really proud of that, and I hope that you guys feel that.
Amen.
Mayor, can I make one more comment? I'm sorry.
Of course.
Councilmember Spillsbury reminded me, I had an event on the first day of school at Fremont Junior High in collaboration with some officers from Mesa Police Department. I just wanted to say thank you for that, and it was so fabulous to see them come out. In addition to being there, in addition to the SRO, several of the patrol officers stopped by and helped hand out ice cream to the students. And the interaction between the officers and the students was phenomenal, they were so great with them and talking to them and interacting. And so I just wanted to say thank you for, to them and the department for doing that, taking the time, and actually having a great time and enjoying it. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, if there's nothing else, I'll just echo our appreciation. Chief Cost and Commander Lieutenant, thank you for, we're proud of this program and the relationships that you've developed with our school districts, and nothing could be more important than working with them for the safety of these young people. So, thank you so much.
Mayor, Council, we appreciate your support. It definitely goes a long way with our officers and our school resource officers, so, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, Item 2B is a presentation and to discuss Mesa's 2050 General Plan Draft Vision Statement and Draft Guiding Principles.
Councilmembers, thank you for allowing us to provide you with an update on the general plan. With me today, we have Rachel from Planning, Jeff from Development Services, and on the line, we have Bruce Meegan, who's with Logan Simpson, our consultant, who's been working on the project. So we're all here to answer any questions that you may have. We wanted to start by thanking you for the feedback we received at our last meeting when we provided the update on the general plan. We, as staff, went back, worked with our consultants to really take a careful and intentional look at the 2040 plan, to see what foundation existed from that plan that we would then bring forward as we're updating the 2050 plan. There's a lot of really good information in that 2040 plan that we, as staff, knew we weren't going to lose, but we wanted to make that clear to the council, that we're building upon that plan, we're not just discarding it. So, we know that our city is continuing to evolve. We're looking for our 2050 update to really look at the positive, forward-thinking aspects of where we want to go as a city, and that we know also, going into 2050, the 2050 plan, we don't have a lot of land left. So what we're really looking for is not only what we can do with some of our vacant land, but what we can do with some of our vacant land. but what redevelopment opportunities do we have in the city? So that really is kind of the foundation of what we're doing with the general plan update. Rachel, there's a slide ahead of me. So, as you can see from this slide, this is the timeline, and you've seen this slide over and over again. And we've gone through our project kickoff, we've done a lot of outreach through our community context portion of the plan, we've been spending a lot of time on vision setting, we are now in the choices and priorities portion of the plan. And in fact, we've started to see some drafts of the various portions of the plan, various chapters of the plan. The diagram below is a little bit of a spaghetti mix. And what we wanted to do is just so that council and so the public understands, this is not a linear process, right? This is an iterative process. We're going back and forth between all of the different phases of this plan. And so while we may be within that choices and priorities now, you can see we're also in the draft plan, but we're also looking and going back to community context, still working on our existing conditions portion of the plan. We're also revisiting vision setting and the guiding principles. So we're kind of making that iterative process as opposed to just, we complete one task and move on to the next. So this, this slide is showing many of the themes that we've heard through a lot of the outreach that's been conducted. As you know, we've done one-on-one stakeholder meetings, we've done several surveys, we've done urban labs in each of the districts. We've gotten a lot of feedback and input from our residents. And you can see from this slide that really what we're hearing over and over again is about how people and residents really want to protect the family values of Mesa. They really want to continue to have housing choices here in Mesa. They want good quality retail available to them within walkable areas. They want good, high-paying jobs so that their quality of life continues to improve as we move forward into the future. These themes have helped us shape the vision and the guiding principles that you'll see we present as part of this presentation. And I just wanted to briefly talk about each of those public input portions as it relates to the survey. So in the first survey, this was really the opportunity and constraint survey. So this survey went out earlier this year. And really, the top three reasons that people over and over and over again reiterated to us as to why they want to live in Mesa is because of family and community, because housing is affordable, especially when looking at other jurisdictions within the area, and that they have housing options. And that the three top issues that are facing the city today are having good quality commercial and retail choices, having attainable housing. So while there's good affordable housing, some people still have, if they're in a lower income level, may have trouble with some of the attainable housing. And then making sure that we are continuing with public safety first to ensure that our city remains safe. The second survey really looked about, asked residents about the future of the city. And so, we asked them, what statements best describe what you think is the future of Mesa? The first one, again, brings in those family values, that ability to choose Mesa as a place to raise your family. The second one talked about keeping Mesa safe. So this clearly indicates that people feel safe in Mesa, but they just want to make sure that we're maintaining that safety aspect of the city. Having financially attainable and quality housing for all different income levels, whether from the top or down to, you know, some of the lower income, we want to make sure that people have a choice in where they live and that they have good quality housing. And residents really want to make sure that we're responsibly managing the natural resources in the city. And over and over again, we heard about water in particular and how the city manages its water resources. As you're all aware, and I believe most of you attended your urban labs, we had an urban lab in each of the districts. And there, again, and I think you're going to hear over and over again the same kind of themes. So the common themes we heard based on future land use in the city is that there needs to be connectivity. We need to have a comprehensive greenway and path system that's connecting not only our neighborhoods, but some of the development that surrounds those neighborhoods. Excuse me. Quality entertainment and things to do, so people don't have to go to other jurisdictions to go to, you know, a sit-down restaurant, to go to an event, to go to an entertainment or a park area. Having those quality entertainment places, those places within, whether walking distance or close by, that they could go and enjoy those activities. They want the city to remain convenient by car, so want to make sure that the city maintains a good, safe network of our transportation routes. They want to make sure that there is compatibility between developments so that we're buffering and landscaping between different uses. They want to make sure that the city is offering housing choices, variety, not only in the types, but of whether it's a townhouse, single-family, a condo, a large house, small house, but also options for rentals and for ownership. And then finally, there is the idea of protecting our large agricultural areas. We've got an agricultural history and how do we reflect that in the future of the city? So what this, this slide is showing is the foundation of how we've come to the vision and guiding principles that will be presented today. We've looked at the 2040 Plan and looked at how it was organized, and I'll talk about, a little bit about that in the next slide. We really looked at the 2040 Vision Statements, there were 12 of them, and the guiding principles of which there were three. There are also goals, policies, strategies and objectives in that plan. So you can see there's a lot of layering that occurs in the 2040 Plan. Our consultants and staff, we looked at best practices, what other jurisdictions, not only in the region, but around the country are doing as it relates to general plans, to make sure that we're following those best practices. The community input and feedback was incredibly important in putting together the vision statement and the guiding principles that we'll present. Again, I think we've heard a lot of the same themes over and over again from our residents. The existing conditions and trends, that's all of the research and analysis that goes into developing the plan, that will go into developing the strategies, the recommendations of the plan. We've also looked at the city council's strategic priorities and how, what we as, in the general plan are proposing, how that matches with what the city councils has identified as their strategic strategies. So we talked a little bit about the structure and the organization of the 2040 Plan, and this is just a quick diagram to show the different sections of the plan and how the different pieces fit together. So section one included that executive summary and kind of the background and the process that we've gone through in putting the plan together. Section two is really about building that, a better Mesa. And this is where we see those 12 vision statements and the guiding principles, those three guiding principles, which then lead into the various chapters. These chapters, as you know, are required by state statute. And so for each of those chapters that have been identified in the plan, there's a series of goals, policies and strategies. And then section three and four, again, reiterate the same kind of structure in terms of the chapter, have goals, policies and strategies. There is one exception with the transportation chapter in that we had objectives because we tied it back to the transportation plan.
Yes, excuse me, Mayor, go ahead.
Before we get off that slide, what's the difference between the dotted line boxes and the solid boxes on this particular chart?
So, the required elements are the ones that are not dotted. Those are required by state statute.
Okay, so the solid boxes are the required ones and the dotted ones are ones that we added in?
They're, I think they're more, not necessarily what we added, but they're, they're the, kind of the narrative that leads into the, those pieces that are required.
And pieces that talk about process structure.
Rachel put this slide together, so I'm gonna let her answer that.
Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, and they're also the chapters of the plan that talk about kind of the process and the structure. So those go more into those details, whereas the other ones are the required elements.
So if there's 16 chapters and five are dotted, does that mean there's 11 that are required?
There's 17 required.
That's why, I thought there was, oh, elements, but maybe not chapters, so.
Right, it can be organized in a way where you have a chapter and you're including three or four elements within a chapter, so you're not always going to see a one-to-one ratio.
So, 17 elements, maybe like the vision statements, guiding principles, goals, policies, I mean, are those, those are counted as like elements, maybe?
Well, if we go back, I mean, we look at the ARS, it talks about, you have to talk about transit, you have to talk about safety, so it's more of those components. We think about our departments, all the things the city does, those are mostly what those elements are comprised of.
And then we get to organize it how we want in our plan?
Correct.
As long as we're touching on each of those requirements, which you'll see in the 2050 organization, how we're looking to put that together.
Okay.
Because it is a little bit different than the 2040 Plan. So, for the 2050 Plan update, one of the things we're trying to do is look at the 2040 Plan and how we've evolved from that, how we've worked through that plan and how we can make it better moving forward. There were a lot of different layers, as I had indicated, in the 2040 Plan. And a lot of the policies and goals were not necessarily measurable or easy to track. So what we're trying to do is really make it clear for not only staff, but for council and for our residents to understand how we're implementing this plan. And so what we've done is we've put together a plan organization that really only has four layers. You see five here, but I'll explain what the core values are. So the first layer is this overall vision statement of where does Mesa want to go in the future? This is that aspirational statement of what the city wants to be. We've separated the plan into three what we call core values. What are the things that are important to Mesa? And that is our people, our land and our economy. These are our resources, these are the thing that make Mesa the city that it is today, and we really want to highlight that in the plan. What we've done is we've separated these elements or chapters, as Jeff described them, into each of those three core values. Under each of those three core values, we'll have a guiding principle for each of those chapters or elements. And so I'll use, for example, great neighborhoods. If that's a chapter within the general plan, that will then have a guiding principle for it. And so that guiding principle for great neighborhoods will sit underneath that chapter. There are actually four chapters under the people. It's the great neighborhoods, history, arts and cultural resources, social services, healthcare and education, and public safety. So there's four chapters or elements, some of which are combined underneath the people, because those are the things that bring into that resource, which is our people. Under each of those guiding principles is a series of strategies or policies. And these policies are designed to help us to realize the guiding principles. So hopefully what you're seeing is we have a vision, and then we have a series of guiding principles which feed up into that vision. And then the next layer down is these strategies, and every strategy comes back to that guiding principle to help to implement and to make sure that we're realizing that guiding principle. And then the final is the actions. And this is where I think we start to get into those details, where we have, have measures that are, or actions that are meaningful, measurable, and things that we could track that really are the implementation of the plan. So these, these actions, we're looking to compile in a separate document, because this is a working document that city staff, city council, the residents can follow year after year to see what have we achieved the last year as it relates to our general plan. We think that by reorganizing the general plan in this way, that we're better able to connect that top vision with the things that staff is doing as part of our everyday work, that the city council is making policy decisions on, and everything feeds back up into that vision, which is for the plan. So with that being said, the next two slides are going to talk about the draft vision statements and the guiding principles based on those three core values. So the 2050 Vision Statement, as it's been written, will reflect our people, our land and our economy. So that statement is that Mesa is a safe, desirable, family-oriented community that celebrates our heritage and innovative spirit, seeks economic prosperity for all, prioritizes quality places and offers choices where people live, work, play and learn. Each of those core values, then, will have a series of chapters. And each of these, these principles represent one of those chapters. As I had said, with the people, we've got great neighborhoods, we've talked about our arts, culture and history, we talk about our social services and our public safety. So the core values under the guiding, and guiding principles under our people is that our neighborhoods are vibrant and evoke civic pride. Our community values our heritage and embraces its diverse culture. Our social services are compassionate and equitable, and our city is safe and has exceptional public safety services. Under our land, we've included housing, land use and urban design, transportation and transit, and our parks and open space system with the four guiding principles being, our housing is attainable for all, our activity centers are integrated and well-planned, our transportation network is efficient and well-connected, and our parks and open space offer rich recreation and support active lifestyles. In the economy core value, we've got three different chapters, and they relate to economic development, sustainability and resiliency, and public services. And those are that our economy is innovative and prosperous, our city is resilient and sustainable, and our public services are reliable and cost-effective. Each of these guiding principles will have a series of strategies that sit under them. We've started working on those based on the input we've received from the public, based on input we've received from our various departments, so that that series of strategies will layer into more detail, which then will layer into the detail of the action plan. So we're able each year to track what progress have we made on the plan. And so that, that really is where we are with the general plan, how we've looked at reorganizing it and structuring it so that we have a way to really create meaningful progress and actions for the plan to help us to achieve the overall vision. And staff and our consultants are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I know you've been very busy and as you mentioned, we've all been to some of the district engagement events, and I know that there's a lot of discussion going on in our community about this, so thank you for all the work that's been done. Ms. Spillsbury, did I see your hand up?
I have like a lot of questions and thoughts, so let me see if I can get to all of them. First of all, I just was curious, on the, in the 24 general plan, when we were doing this whole process for that, do we have access to those surveys and was housing ever mentioned by the community for the 2040 general plan?
I'm going to ask Bruce, whose team has been working on the existing conditions report, if he could maybe summarize that.
Yeah, I'm gonna go by memory, councilmember, so, but I will fact-check anything I tell you today. When I went back and looked, housing was mentioned, and it was, I looked to see especially the amount of workforce housing that was stressed, which is usually the part that determines how far a community will go in terms of supplying housing. So that's what I looked for. Of course, when I, when I did go look, there was definitely, I believe, a lot of stress of the mix of housing types and creating a greater mix, but it stopped about there. I think what we've heard this time is more nuanced in terms of location, height, type, and also some resistance as well. So it was stressed in the last plan to answer your question directly, but providing more workforce housing, there wasn't a lot to be straightforward, a lot of meat to that.
Councilmember, can I ask, since I'm probably one of the few people who's actually here? So back then, there was a real push, we felt like we were losing out on the economic development side to attracting high-quality jobs and professional jobs. And one of the comments that came back was that, for example, when, every time there was a Boeing executive or the site manager would show up, they would live in Scottsdale and some of the, and the staff. And the feeling was, we didn't have enough of that kind of housing to attract the decision-makers, the high-level managers that would be attracting, you know, bring their businesses to Mesa. So I think it's mentioned somewhere, I can't remember what the term is used, but about looking to try to be more competitive in that marketplace. I know that was one, I'm not suggesting, there were other conversations, but I remember back then, that was one of the things, we always felt like we were coming short, we were trying to recruit companies to the airport or whatever, is there, when their executives would come out and they would look at the housing and the schooling, those are the main things and decision-makings were made, and so we were struggling with that.
Which is kind of why over the last decade, I've been here for three years, but that I've heard that maybe there's been more of that push for like quality housing and luxury housing and stuff, right?
Yeah.
I guess, but I'm just curious, because I, obviously a lot changes in 10 years, so now we're in this housing crisis, but so now we're in this housing crisis, but everyone is, so I just wonder like, if 10 years ago, that had been something that was talked about a lot, if we wouldn't be in such a housing crisis now? And then like, what are we not thinking of in another 10 years that would need to be part, you know, and it's impossible to, you know, project what that crisis might be in 10 years. I guess that's just kind of where my thoughts are. Are you wanting to jump in?
Well, somebody was actually here during that plan, to bounce off Chris, we were coming off of a different era.
Right.
Right, so housing affordability wasn't a problem, getting people to live in houses and purchase houses because the economic crisis that had preceded that had, so this wasn't an issue as much. So it focused more on the higher-end housing, plus creating, really appreciating the diversity of our neighborhoods from Lehigh to Eastmark to downtown to all the different areas that we created. And that's really what we were focusing on. And part of the issue that we're having, we could point to a lot of things currently with the housing affordability crisis. One, just a tremendous influx of economic development activity coming from other states that are now coming here. But the fact that during that economic crunch, they weren't, home builders weren't building houses. So we are now experiencing that, and my suspicion would be in 10 years is this might not be as big a concern, just depending on the economy.
Yeah, because obviously, when you're, I appreciate that, when you're, you know, in a certain time period where you're making this plan, whatever's the hot topics are going to be the things that rise to the top. So like, housing's mentioned three times on there, and then water, obviously, like, how could you not talk about water right now? And so then that complicates, like, are these going to be the issues in 10 years? And so do we want to put such a focus? I don't, I don't know, just some thoughts, yeah.
Do you look at what's the issue today?
Yeah.
Figure out, over a 10-year period, what, long-term, what is the needs of this community?
Right, because I still, you know, have this probably very unfounded worry that we're going to build so much housing that in 10 years, we're going to have all this extra housing and no one to live in it.
I think it's not just the housing, it's the type of housing.
And no water.
It's the type of housing.
Yeah, the type of housing.
It's the right, what's the right mix.
And we've talked a lot, we need every type, and that's what was on that slide. A general question I had was, is this reorganization, I mean, I love like, how simplistic it feels and it works better for my brain than the other one. I'm just curious if this is being driven by our consulting firm, is this being driven by staff? This kind of rearrangement of the plan? Because I know you're looking at other cities' plans, is this just, is this, I don't know, if you could?
I think it's probably a combination of both. I think it's kind of, I think staff kind of initiated this kind of approach, and I think the consultant, looking at what other people have done, I think it's, I think simplifying the number of layers was really important. It's something I know I've done through most of my career, so that it makes it much more user-friendly for not just the planners, because this general plan should not just be for planners, and unfortunately, a lot of people write them that way.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is get this so that the everyday user is able to use this document.
I appreciate that. So just a few more questions, really quick. So when I look back at the 2040, and I look at all the different chapters, I was kind of trying to like, see like, where those chapters would fit, like, if they would fit in people, economy, or land, or whatever. The one that jumps out to me that I guess I didn't hear in any of the like, guiding principles was just about environmental planning and conservation, and since that's such a big deal with our climate action plan and everything, like, I'm assuming that's in there somewhere.
Mayor, council member Spillsbury, yes. In fact, sustainability and the environment really weaves through most of these.
Right.
So what we found, working with the environment and sustainability team, is they might actually have strategies that sit everywhere in each of these chapters. So that really is something that weaves through. I think we'll probably see a lot of it in the parks and recreation, transportation, urban design, land use. So I think it's that weaving through as opposed to it being a separate chapter per se-
Because I, yeah, I do see a lot of these chapters fitting in more than one of those categories, so to like, simplify it into three doesn't really work if it has crossover, right?
And there will be, Mayor, council member, there will be a lot of crossover, and that's how we'll really try to show what those relationships are between the different core values, because you can't have great people if you don't have great neighborhoods, you don't have a great economy. So there's not only a nesting up, but there's a meshing horizontally at the same time.
Okay. Slide 10, the phrase "quality places" means nothing to me. So I'm just curious what you mean by "quality places," and if there's a way we could, I don't know, that just, "quality places" as in what, like, neighborhoods, entertainment? I don't, I just don't, that phrase doesn't work for me, just because it doesn't say anything.
Mayor, council member, that's a good point, and we can look at that wording, because it could mean any of those things. This is about great placemaking, which is a planner term, so we tried to get away from the planner term. But we may have gone too far the other way with getting away, because people like to understand that.
Just as a regular citizen, that phrase just doesn't mean anything to me, so. And then on the next slide, "activity centers," what does that phrase refer to?
So what we hear over and over again is that, and there's a lot of different words that are used to describe this. I've heard 10-minute city, 15-minute city, mixed-use neighborhoods.
You can't say that phrase right now.
Okay, mixed-use neighborhood, so we've heard a lot of different words. Residents might not know what mixed-use means. Again, that's a planner term, so what we're trying to really evoke here is a place where you can go and you can eat dinner, you can have recreation opportunities, possibly apartments, you know, if we have the vertical mixed-use, so that you start to get that sense of activity in an area. So we create, and again, trying to stay away from the planning terms, these nodes of activity is what we would call them. So we're, again, we're trying to find more user-friendly words to describe those things.
Because to me, like, an activity center is like, an Amazing Jakes or something, right? Like, it just, that doesn't evoke a particular image for me of what an activity center is, so I was like, is that a library? Is it the Mesa Arts Center? Is it like, I, that phrase also didn't work for my brain, so if we could maybe figure out how to say that differently. And I totally appreciate you trying to stay away from planner terminology, I really think that's, that's great. I just need it to say something that means something.
Mayor, council member, that's a great point, and yes to all of those things.
I'm not going to wordsmith this to death, there were just two that popped out at me, so I will be done, that was a lot, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's been so, so much work done on this, so I really want to express my thanks.
Ms. Go forth, did I see you leaning forward to say something?
Wow, wow, I can't move, huh? Yes, you did, thank you. I just wanted to go back real quick to the housing. The way it seems to me, it's become, it's, in 10 years, it's evolved to become a more nuanced conversation, as opposed to 10 years ago, it was sort of this broad, where, you know, we need more high-income housing. It seems like now, we're kind of drilling down to what really creates a vibrant area, and talking about all the different housing in a particular area. Would you say that's right, Bruce? I mean, we're kind of-
That's exactly right, and thank you for doing that. In the older plan, it was, you know, what you'd expect, again, it was a different decade. We need lots of, we need a mix of housing, that's what it stresses over and over again. And there's been some accomplishments towards that end. Now, the discussion even with the community is even nuanced with, if people remember that sort of a housing bell curve, where we're missing a portion of housing in some aspects. So on the very, very low end, clearly, that's always a need for the workforce, but as mentioned by the city manager, we're missing some of the other upper-middle, you know, sometimes people use the term "missing middle," but definitely in Mesa, it's more acute of having that missing-middle housing as you grow out. So if you look at your jobs and what jobs you expect and what housing you have, there is a mismatch. There's also a mismatch in terms of spending and economic development by having additional variety of housing types and housing price points, that tends to increase spending within a community. So when people look around, they want Mesa to be nicer, a mix of people and housing will contribute to that, especially at the middle class. And lastly, I think it was pointed out that if you are trying to attract corporate executives, the next student who's going to be a doctor and live in the community, the next great teacher, having a variety of housing, and when we say "variety of housing," that again has to be nuanced in terms of what that means, but that doesn't just mean single-family, it could be a brown-stony-type townhome that executives wishing to have with no yard or key access to a freeway or to live downtown. So that is all part of economics, and it's also part of our people and part of our lands, so.
Thanks, Bruce. And by the way, I think the urban lands, at least the one I attended in my district, was fantastic, thank you for doing that. I heard a lot of great feedback, and thank you to everybody else at the staff who participated. I appreciate you all going back after presenting this the last time and working on it a little bit more and organizing it a little differently. I really like what you've come back with, I like the vision, and then the three themes that work through the entire plan. I think that's easy to understand, easy to understand what, how it's organized and what's important to Mesa, and then if nobody gets past this, they're, I think they're good, you know, they truly have an understanding of what the plan is going to say, even just stopping right there. So I just have a few comments, some of which are similar to, I think, council member Spillsbury, and I'm going to just get my screen over here real quick. On the, let's see, the, on the activity centers, so I kind of went the other way with integrate, by "integrated," you mean "mixed-use," is that correct?
Mayor, council-
Balanced?
Council member Go forth.
Sorry.
That is correct, that is mixed-use.
Okay.
To make sure those uses are integrated, whether vertically, horizontally, and connected, yes.
So I kind of think of these two, so that this one, the activity centers and the transportation network, a little bit differently. I sort of see our transportation, our activity centers are well-connected, not necessarily our transportation network. I throw that out there to think about. So I would almost say that our, add the "well-connected" into the activity centers instead of, instead of transportation, what are your thoughts on that?
Mayor, council member Go forth. I think that by "integrated," we meant that connectivity, because I think you'll see that theme of connectivity through it, but we can look at the words to ensure that it's as clear as we can make it, again, trying to use very plain English in moving forward, but we can look at something like that to ensure that that's very clear there.
Okay, and in furtherance of that, so I was sort of thinking, could we add something about, instead of "well-connected," it's efficient and multimodal? Can we, can we really, I know that's getting kind of specific, but I think that is clearer.
Yeah, Mayor, council member Spillsbury, that, what I, you hit on exactly what I was going to add to this, is that when we went out to the public, what we heard over and over was about our, you know, our transportation, not just being, you know, automobiles, but all the different modes, about those being connected and interacting better. So we tried to stay away from multimodal just because it's a little jargony, that's why we tried to use the word "well-connected," but we can definitely go back and take a look at that.
Okay. And then what do you think about also maybe including something about it being linked to the land use? Is that getting too specific? I think that's important, but maybe it doesn't, maybe it doesn't go here, but that's sort of a suggestion I'm throwing out. As far as transport, as far as transportation network, efficient and linked to land use?
Mayor, council member Go forth, yes. Clearly, land use is not going to work without a good transportation network, so we can look in and see if there's some way to bring that concept of their connectivity, whether it's in the principle itself, or if it's maybe some of the more nuanced strategies that start to get into that detail.
And then on, so I was a little curious about number, I'm actually on slide, I think it says 16, number four, from the 2040 statement and how it is incorporated into the 2050 guiding principle. It didn't, it seemed more, it seems like it should be connected to land and not economy? Can you explain that a little bit?
Mayor, council member Go forth, yes, you're looking at a different presentation than the one we've got pulled up, if you just give me one second here, I can pull that up.
Oh, okay.
I need to put my glasses on though, to do that.
Mayor, council member Spillsbury, so the slide that you're referring to is, based on our last conversation with council, we went back and did an exercise looking at the previous 12 vision statements to see how they aligned with what we are proposing now. So that was kind of a backup slide for us to address how the alignment of those various things. We don't have that up in our presentation, but Mary's trying to pull it up right now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it was great, I appreciated seeing that, and it really, and I understood most of it, just that one, it seemed like it was just kind of stuck in there, because I think it's an important one from the 2040 vision statement, and, but I just am not sure how it relates to the economy.
Councilmember Spillsbury, which item are you talking about?
Go forth, this is Go forth, Rachel.
Go, go.
16.
That's okay. Did you ask a question?
Slide 16.
All right.
Thank you.
Three copies now.
She's got a choice.
All right. Council member Go forth, which item are you inquiring about?
I'm under, so, I think it's like the, it says 16 on there, I don't know what that refers to, the slide, but the column, 2040 vision statements, and on the left, and the right column is the 2050 principles of our economy. Number four, under the 2040, changes in the form of buildings and neighborhoods have provided the opportunity to reduce auto travel and energy usage, and then, but it's, and then you have "our city is resilient and sustainable under our economy." I was just curious, where number four fits, how number four fits in under the 2040 principles of our economy?
Mayor, council member Go forth, so when we look at those, the key words in there, the energy usage, desert environment, that was, we've got that resiliency and sustainability in, kind of branched under the economy chapter, so that if you look at the core value slide that has our people, our land, and our economy, you see "our city is resilient and sustainable." I think this is one of those that probably fits within more than one core value, it probably also fits within our land core value and the transportation network, but I think it was those key words of resiliency, energy use, that, and the desert environment, that we really tried to pull it into the resilient and sustainable, which we've now placed under economy.
Okay, okay, I understand that, thanks, Mary. Actually, I think that's it. Yep. Thank you. Again, I appreciate you all going back, I think this is set up a lot better, and I like how you've organized it with these themes, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury.
Just one more note that I think, the phrase "our parks and open space offer rich recreation and support active lifestyles," I just noticed, I'm on slide 15, that that's to replace, or whatever, the quality of life assets, including arts, culture, and recreation. And I feel like that sentence really just lends itself to like, parks and active things, and not necessarily, using parks, open space, recreation, and active lifestyle, using those words. The only word that really fits for arts and culture would be "rich," and so-
Yeah, we lost the arts and-
We lost arts and culture, and I think that is, with our Mesa Arts Center and our museums, like, we really need to highlight our arts and culture, so we lost that somewhere.
So Mayor, council member Spillsbury, we actually saw that under our people.
Okay.
So the, our community values of heritage and embraces our diverse culture, that would bring in the arts, the culture, and all of those things.
Okay.
So that's where we had seen that being part of the people.
I don't think-
So the our community values of heritage and embraces our diverse culture, that would bring in the arts, the culture, and all of those things. So that's where we had had seen that being part of the people.
I don't think that still screams arts and culture to me, even though this is the word culture. But I think, because I'm looking at it of where you, like, which which 2040 you were using for the 2050, and that's where you guys have it, is under the rich and active lifestyle. So maybe if that sentence, that number seven, was placed under the community values, I would have thought more of that direction. So just a thought there. Just want to make sure we don't lose our arts and culture.
Well, well, councilmember Spillsbury, we'll make sure that we modify that.
Thank you. Mr. Heredia.
Hey, real quick, I liked the the presentation, the nesting and meshing makes sense, right? I think as explained, and thanks for the Urban Labs pieces, those, I think. I was told that District Three was the best one out of all of them, so thank you for Yeah, yeah, so. But as far as the timeline concern, what what does it look like as far as further public outreach? I know we're in the choices, priorities piece. So is there additional outreach to the public on, as we do this and then the draft plan? Was, what does that entail as far as further outreach to the public before we vote on to go on the ballot, right? So.
Mayor, councilmember Heredia, I'll answer that question. It's a great question. We absolutely, as you can see, we've prioritized engaging the public, and we're going to continue to do that. State statute actually requires we do it continuously, so that is part of your adopted engagement plan. What we're going to be doing in the fall centers a lot around both public engagement, general public, and with youth. So I'm going to start on the first part right now. As of now, if you go to tomorrow's mesa.com, or you can go to Mesa Listens, either way, it gets you to the same place. There is a survey that is out, or it's our third survey. And what that survey is, is it's a continuation of the Urban Labs. We realized we held our labs during the hottest summer in mankind, and so we didn't, not already came out. And so we want to make sure that whether you could attend in person or not, you can still get a version of those questions that are get us to those same, just get this refinement of the same questions and thoughts we were trying to think through at the Urban Labs. That is now public and live. The other thing that we have out there right now is a is the virtual future land use map. So that was another piece of the Urban Labs. And essentially what that is, allows folks to learn about the different future land use types and then to be able to go in to the parcel level, even if they want to, and leave us notes and say, you know, I don't know if this fits. Or we we are looking for more refinement there. And so we'll be using that with the public and also going back to some of our boards and committees of the city to get their feedback on on the future land use map. So those are the two elements there. The other two pieces in the fall, and I'll hit these really quickly. We are working with a partnership with Mesa Public Schools and also with ASU to do some interactivity with our youth. Youth engagement has been low, and we we've pivoted our our engagement, not entirely, we want to make sure everybody knows, but we have pivoted a bit towards youth to try and increase their engagement in this plan. And so we're doing some work at ASU in in early November with a lot of our high school students. And then we also have an arts contest that's up for youth that allows them to envision the future through visual arts. And so we have a contest that's also on tomorrow's mesa.com, and we'd love all of our our high school age students to go out and and take a look at that. And then, and I'll, very briefly, sorry, I know this is going on, but in early 2024, there will be another set of public engagements similar to Mesa or to the urban public, the Urban Labs. So similar to the Urban Labs, that will be another chance for people to say, okay, we've got the plan drafted. Did we get it right? This is your chance to review it, and we'll have an opportunity, both in public and online, for folks to go through the plan that we've drafted, to make sure that we heard the comments right, interpreted it right, and we we wrote it right.
Thank you, council. Any other questions or comments on this? Mr. Freeman.
Mayor, oh, sorry.
Oh. You're up, councilmember Goforth.
I just wanted to put in a plug for some additional feedback at an event I'm having on Wednesday, this Wednesday, August 23rd, eight thirty to ten thirty. It's coffee with a council member and cop. And staff members from the general plan team will be there to collect additional feedback. So that for District Five or anybody that wants to come, please come and provide additional feedback. Get a voucher for free coffee. I'm not sure if I was supposed to make that public, but that is happening. So I appreciate them coming to this event and 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 gathering more feedback. So I hope that that is successful and we get enough people. So just wanted to to let everybody know that's happening.
Hopefully, there'll be enough coffee. All right, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mary. So I have some comments, you know, I'm going to focus on fourteen, fifteen, sixteen on the pages you didn't have in part of the presentation. But were you saying the 2040 vision plan was mainly planner type terminology? I know that that word was used, Mary, you use planning type terminology for the 2040 vision plan. And now the 2050 guiding principles are adjacent to it. So I I I've just been looking through that. Is, so anyway, the 2040, is that, can you explain that?
Sure, mayor, councilmember. I don't want to say that it was filled with a lot of planning terms. And there is a lot of planning jargon, I know, that we use regularly, and we try very hard not to because really what we want to do is make this incredibly accessible to our residents. And so what we're trying to do is use what I would just call plain English to describe things instead of using planning terms.
Okay. So I guess the 2050 guiding principles to me, does it give you more latitude interpretation of the vision and future of the 2050 plan versus the 2040 plan? Because I'm I'm thinking, I'll just say, like numbers ten and eleven, you're putting it into our community values, our heritage embraces diverse cultures. I don't know that that really says what 2040 actually was trying to say. And and so with some of them, I've been reading through them, and and I know you're trying to compress everything. But would it be poss, I think it's kind of weak in a way in in the way it's trying to message. And trust me, I'm not an English major or anything, but would it be possible to create some type of subcategory or something that if I click on here, what is that supposed to mean? Vibrant and civic pride, and then it reflects over here maybe to a reference link to the 2040 plan, what it was trying to say then, what we're trying to look for in the future. I don't know, I'm just putting it out there.
So mayor, councilmember, that next layer down is those strategies. So where we're looking to evoke that civic pride, that's where we might be able to talking, to talk about things like volunteerism, and maybe there's a strategy related to volunteerism. So there is another layer that then sits under these. Again, we're we're not comparing apples to apples, and so what we're trying to do is kind of create this new organization that from these very succinct guiding principles, which basically are those aspirational statements about where the city wants to be related to that topic, there will be that series of strategies that gets into that level of detail because these vision statements, again, not an apple to apple, are probably more detailed than what our guiding principles are. But our strategies will capture those. We likely won't have a link back to the 2040 plan because this will replace the 2040 plan. But we do have in our existing conditions in the plan, we do talk about the 2040 plan and what we've been able to garner out of it that was really helpful in setting the foundation for this plan update.
So you're saying the detail of what is in the 2040 plan probably falls out underneath twenty, in the 2050 statement?
If it does.
I don't think it was.
Councilmember Brady, it's, it may, not councilmember, sorry, city manager.
No, thank you. No, thank you.
Sorry. It it may or may not fall out, or it may be captured as a strategy. So depending on on what that vision statement was, again, remember, we had vision statements, guiding principles, policies, strategies, objectives, and there were goals. So we had a lot of different layers, so we're trying to capture as many of those as we can and kind of put them in this new structure.
I I get all that. I just, I just hope that, you know, going to slide fifteen, one, two, and six, you're you're compressing all that information into activity centers are integrated and well planned.
Yeah, and Mayor, councilmember Freeman, going back to, this was really just an exercise to see how they aligned with those those twelve vision statements, how they aligned with what we're proposing. It it wasn't an exercise to make sure that that all the elements in each phrase kind of fell into that proposed phase because we know that there's going to be some crossover with our new proposal. So, you know, some elements that were discussed in a a vision statement in the new 2050 general plan, that might be addressed in several of the different guiding principles. So it's going back to, it's a different way to kind of organize and present the information. And and it's not a perfect exercise, but we we tried to do our best to to kind of show that we were still, you know, capturing all the information from the 2040 general plan and bringing it forward.
Okay. All right, this is just some of my thoughts as I read through it and try to, you know, because others are going to look at it and go, I don't really know what this is supposed to mean and what is it referring to. So just some consideration on how it can be developed and put into better context. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Counsel, any other discussion on this item? All right, thank you. We look forward to continuing to have these conversations. Next item on our agenda, item two C is to take action on appointments to various boards. Counselors, there are motion to that effect. Thank you, Mr. Summers and Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I saw that Ms. Goforth voted aye, and councilmember Duff has moved on, so that passes. I'm sorry. She's moved on, she's out of town, and we appreciate her being here until now. So that motion passes unanimously. Next, item three is to acknowledge receipt of various board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Mr. Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Goforth also voted aye. So that passes unanimously as well. Next is current events and conferences attended. This has been a long break, so I'm sure that we could all, you know, do a great book report on how our summer vacation went. So I'm not trying to discourage anyone from from sharing, so please take it away.
I know. Now I'm afraid to bring anything up. No, I'm just going to bring up a few things. Obviously, over six weeks, but we attended the Water Burger Check presentation
That's right.
for our Parks and Rec Happy Camper Program. That feels like forever ago, but wanted to thank them. We did a custard with a cop at Andy's Frozen Custard in the middle of July. I think it was only a hundred and twelve maybe, and their misters weren't working. And so many people came. I was like, I told the police department, no one's coming, and then tons of people came. So that was fun. I want to thank them for that. Councilmember Freeman and I attended the NLC Summer Meetings, and I was able to attend my Fair and Youth Education Family Meetings in Tacoma, Washington. It was nice to get out of the heat for a few days. Last week, I was able to speak at the Sant尼รันค์ค่าย mission for, in behalf of the mayor. He couldn't make it. It was the visit of their prophet, their worldwide prophet was there. I'm not going to try to say her name, but it was a beautiful event, and it was such a privilege to be a part of that, and that was great. And then I also wanted to just thank our staff for coordinating and organizing our last three Grand Hotel Purchase Off the Streets program meetings and thank all of the residents for attending and voicing their concerns and thoughts. And this is a big one, so I I wanted to thank everyone for for doing that. And for councilmember Freeman and Goforth, we're also at those meetings as well, so that's that's it for me.
Thank you. Who else would like to share?
No one did it.
Well, there there's just a lot to say, so I I'll just note that over the 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 break, I'm excited that a Proposition 400 extension made its way out of the legislature and was signed by the governor. That's great news for those of us who leave our houses and have to go places. And now this this shifts to a an election. So in November twenty-four, this this transportation plan will be on the ballot. And so I'm sure many of us will express our 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 thoughts on that topic, and I certainly plan on doing that. But I want to thank the governor, thank the legislature, and thank MAG and for working on that transportation plan that that will, we now thankfully will get a chance to weigh in on. And also, I'll just note that, as has been commented on, we we had a record breaking hot July, and and that was presented a lot of challenges for our city government and for our first responders. And so I I'm grateful to everyone that was compassionate and helped respond to the to the really very dangerous heat wave that we've been experiencing. So thank you for all who have have been addressing that challenge. If there's nothing else, Mr. Brady, what is our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, mayor. Just a reminder, we have our council meeting this Monday, August fifteenth. We'll have the review of the agenda one more time at five fifteen, and then the council meeting at five forty-five. Just so the general public might know this, there will be a Historic Preservation Public Meeting on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, from five to six P M. in the council chambers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.